We were trying to go through, we have big years on each one. We're in the firm Friday and we were working out some of those other things because we gotta be ready. We should have that see all the time tomorrow, I think. And everybody can kind of take a look, make sure that things that we were moving here, that it got put in the right year or if there's any other adjustment. Have your email.
Okay, yes, fine, yeah.
So I just wanted you to know we have to provide this thing. I'm trying to get that to you so that July please come to review it before it comes to us.
I'm gonna give it to you in that little swap of that little room stuff. I'm gonna give it to you that because I didn't want to see you talk to whatever. Kind of make sure it doesn't confuse things because I don't wanna.
I don't wanna lose anything.
Yeah, I don't wanna lose anything and I don't wanna confuse it to where you said something. I may have said something and then so I'll just get on the same page.
I think we're saying on three that they could do.
Well, and then I talked to the other one and I think the whole sub of it can be put on there. Not just one street. So if I was, so then they may can start on one side and then if it's toward the end of their deal, he maybe finishes drainage end of this year maybe. And then next year they may not. So that's why I want to give you to figure out exactly what status of when they start. I may not have to move nothing. I don't know.
Right, right.
But I overthought it, yeah, yeah.
For whatever reason, they have, they had a.
Yeah.
On the ones that.
Yeah, so it may work out and then I was like, well, this is gonna be one. It may be great and then you want to do next and then they act like it's old rings. I was like, what? Man, so I'm giving you on that, figure out what are you gonna do?
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public Hearing Item Number One.
An ordinance to increase the monthly garbage fee from fourteen dollars and eight cents to twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents, Lacy Landrell.
So we have talked about this on and off since the contract was accepted last fall. As you know, we had to go into a new contract for garbage services. I believe it was not a matter of when, but more a matter of like how much the the garbage contract was going to increase because we knew that whenever it went into negotiation, it was going to be an increase. Garbage contracts are typically organized for four to five years to help with some of that cost cost offset, but we have had a really good rate for a long year, a long time. Our current rate, as you can see up on the slide, is fourteen dollars and eight cents per customer. That is what the customers have been charged even afterward. The new rate was approved in the contract. We did not pass that on to the customer. So the new rates that we are considering tonight are increasing the fourteen dollars and eight cents to twenty dollars and forty-eight cents, which would be a six dollar and forty cents increase. That would be eliminating the single point of recycling that we have at one ninety. We can talk about that recycling as well. If we decide to include the single point of recycling at the one ninety facility, then the total new rate would be twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents, which is an increase of six dollars and ninety cents. So you have two options there. In comparison, like I said, garbage has escalated everywhere and has escalated at a high rate. On the table of comparison here, we can see Kalkeshu Parish is receives one time a week service. They pay nineteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Hammond's new rate, which is two times a week service, would be twenty dollars and forty-eight cents or twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Nakadish has collection once a week and the carts are also rolled out from the side of the house and rolled back in for twenty-two dollars and seventy cents. Jefferson Parish has two times a week service for a cost of twenty-three dollars and ninety cents. Bossier City has once a week service for a cost of twenty-four dollars. New Orleans has once a week service for a cost of twenty-four dollars. Ascension and Livingston Parish have once a week service for a cost of twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Lafayette has one time a week plus they have curbside recycling one time a week for a cost of twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. And Baton Rouge has one of the highest in our region at two times a week collection plus curbside recycling at thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. It is my understanding that those last two communities have been able to maintain their curbside recycling, one because they have passed that cost on to customers, but also because they have dedicated manufacturing recycling facilities in a nearby location to them that accept multiple types of recycled material. Some of our changes that we have had with the recycling at one ninety, we still do single stream, which means that customers can bring you an entire container of plastics and cardboard and cereal boxes and soup cans as long as they're washed out, cleaned, ready to go. Some of our challenges have been when customers come perhaps with bags that you can't see through or with they come with things that may be a plastic that all of a sudden one week was recyclable. Recyclable, and then the next time is not able to be recycled. So the manufacturing facilities that are receiving the recycled materials have changed kind of what they recycle at different times of the years as they try to meet their markets and their cost prohibit, their cost prohibitions. So the recycling market as a whole is a very ever-changing market. It is a difficult market to work in. The cost escalations there ever since really four years ago when this whole started was because China stopped accepting the United States recycled materials. And so the threshold became, okay, United States, you're gonna have to take care of your own recycling. And we didn't have the capacity in the major facilities across the country to even begin undertaking that. So it has become a much more higher bar of cleanliness of no more pizza boxes with any sort of grease, no more, you know, soup can that kind of got only half washed. Everything has to be entirely washed and then marketable for those places. So with that said, the council has several decisions to make. One, do we pass on the the total rate increase to the customers? I was asked to look into that and see if there are other communities. Is there anything that prohibits us from subsidizing trash? Because I know on social media and other places, customers have asked, why can't you just pay for the the trash? We do not have an ordinance from the quick research that we have done. We do not have an ordinance that prohibits that. But in best practices, I did reach out to the Louisiana Municipal Association. They say that when you charge rates for services such as garbage, water and sewer, that you want those rates to handle the service. That way, your tax dollars can go to other investments in the community such as infrastructure that's much harder to realize on a on a residence, you know, per cost, per resident basis. You don't necessarily charge a fee every time we do a street improvement or we do a park improvement. We don't just add a new fee to a customer or a resident for those kinds of big projects. So it's it's just a matter of where you invest your dollars and and how you choose to invest those dollars in the community. With the budget that we introduced to you and with the budget that we had the the work session on, it does plan for this rate increase. It plans for that additional revenue to come into the city paid by the residents. So if we were to choose a different path, we would need to revise the budget. And we would need to probably look at capital projects and figure out which ones of those we might need to shift to another fiscal year in order to cover that that the less amount of revenue that would be received. So right now, the revenue is projected on this rate being covered by the customers and then on the expenditure, you know, just being awash through the budget. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer those or comments from the public.
Lacy, can, do you have an amount for the in, if the city paid for it, it would need to be in the new budget?
Right, if the city covered the increase of the cost, you're probably looking at around four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars depending on which month and how many customers we had for that month. That would be for the whole year, though. So that's a that's a year's worth of the cost increase.
How you doing, Ms. Lacy?
I'm good. How are you?
Okay, look, as of right now, so it's four hundred thousand dollars that the city that the city would have to pay from today on to the end of the year, right?
To the end of the year, yes, sir. And that's that's a rough estimate because, of course, it would be based on per customer, per month.
Okay, so look, give me a rough estimate on how much the city done paid on this contract so far since the day it was signed all the way up to the day.
I would have to go back and look at exactly what date that was, but I can certainly get that information for you.
Was it August? Was it August or?
I think it was after that. I I wanna say it was like October, maybe, or November that we switched.
Okay, September or something.
Okay. And something else I noticed, normally when we comparing cities and we comparing areas, what's the rate Punchatula pay for their garbage right now?
I think they are paying eighteen dollars.
Okay, what's the rate Ame paying for their garbage?
I do not have that rate.
Okay, cuz what I what I'm looking at, I'm looking at all these here different areas, but I was looking for the areas right around us where the service that we had at first is still being used through those areas. And normally when we make decisions, we kind of make decisions on what Punchatula do, what the parish do and from what the knowledge that I have, the parish in Punchatula still using the old company.
They may be, the parish service, you have the opportunity to use different contractors if you're outside the city limits.
Hmm.
And you typically, if you're outside the city limits, only have one time a week service, not two times a week service. That's been unique to Hammond and Punchatula.
So Punchatula getting one time a week service?
I don't know if they're getting one time a week or two time a week.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on this on this matter? Come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Sound, Sound Nicholas, thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west. I've got a, I have some questions, but it's, is this the time for me to bring it out? Or or is it, it's gonna be voted on, the ordinance gonna be voted on when?
Tonight.
This is the public hearing right now to, so you can you can talk right now. This is public discussion.
Okay, well, well, the reason I'm here is because I've I've had other people calling me and asking me about, you know, what's going on with this increase of the garbage. So I finally, I talked, I called Carl and talked and I talked with Kip a little bit about it. And, you know, a lot of people don't limit that income and maybe six, seven, eight dollars don't hurt certain people, but it does hurt a lot of people in in, you know, in the city limits. So what I'm looking at is, I know I'm limited on income. My my money's not gonna be going up anymore, you know, my my basic income. Now, according to this, this can be, you're looking at a thirty percent increase on on this, you know, going from fourteen to twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Well, not twenty, is it twenty? Yeah, twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. So I mean, you know, six, seven, eight dollars don't sound like a lot, but the city's been paying for it for how long now?
About eight months.
I'm sorry?
About eight months.
Okay, so I pay property tax, you know, every time we turn around, you know, I'm I'm, I've got to pay my my taxes or whatever. But what I'm looking at is the public, the people that don't come out here, you know, they they've only got about maybe five or six of us here. But I've had calls from people and that's the thing that's frustrating is that they call you and they want this and they want that and not, and you ask them, I said, come over here. All you gotta do is come here and say hello. So with basically what I'm looking at, I don't know who even brought this up, the the mayor or whenever he went into a contract. Now, was it, was it up to the council to agree with this? Anybody?
Yes.
So y'all, the council was able to agree with it? Or did did y'all know anything about it before? Yep, um.
Well, this was presented to us back in, I wanna say, probably September. Nothing was ever done with it. So now it's being brought back up.
Okay, so now the council has the option to whether.
Approve it or deny.
Approve it or deny. Okay, so what I'm looking at, if it's a thirty percent increase, you know, in with with limited income of these people in the parish under the city, rather, you know, we're still looking at so much money coming out of their pocket. Now, I understand certain people figure six, seven, eight dollars is not not a lot of money, but it is to, I'm gonna say sixty percent of the people in the city of Hammond. I know it is to me. So what I'd like to do, I'm against it. I would, I would appreciate if y'all consider looking at it from the angle of the people that y'all represent. That way, knowing in your mind that, you know, you're making the right decision. I think the city has enough money to continue paying for it. Now, I see a laugh from Steve, but but I'm 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 asking, so you tell me.
If the city continues to pay for it, then something else has to go. Projects, infrastructure, you know, all you, there's there's no new money. Budget was, the budget was approved, the budget was proposed with this slight increase in there. If we don't do it, then that means we gotta cut something else, which means somebody else is not gonna get something, maybe in your district, maybe in my district, maybe in somebody else's district. But something else that's gonna cost about a half a billion dollars is gonna go away, some service that is needed.
Okay.
You know, and the other thing that, the other thing that I just will remind you of.
Do what, Steve?
I said, the other thing that I will just remind you of is, no matter what we do, you're not gonna pay fourteen dollars for garbage. Again, unless the city picks it up and then something else has to go. You know, rates of, a lot of things have gone up, so.
Okay, when you.
And all of this was discussed months ago.
Okay, I understand it was discussed, but it wasn't approved by anybody, you know. I don't think it was even brought before the council if I'm not correct. Am I correct or not?
It was.
Well, I thought it wasn't brought before the council.
So the garbage contract, the new garbage.
Yeah, the contract, the new one.
Which is what sets the price of garbage, right? So during that discussion, we knew the price of garbage and what it would have to be raised to. So we were well aware that garbage was gonna cost twen- almost twenty-one dollars a month. That was discussed a lot. The increase was not presented at that time. This is the first time that the increase, basically taking what the citizens pay, all of us pay, increasing it by six dollars, seven dollars. This is, tonight is the first time that we've we've voted on that. But the increase in the rate that the city pays was back in September, October.
And that was approved by who?
This council.
Ah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I just wanna clarify that is that the current calculation of what you're paying right now was off of a contract that had another eighteen months or so left on it. That was terminated without me knowing. I did not, I did, I did not support the termination of that. It was terminated and then presented to the council. At that point, had no, we had no garbage in place because a good contract was already terminated. So therefore, we were placed with what we have now. And therefore, when that was, we voted to approve that company because it was a chief of that company after the contract that we already had right now was terminated. Not not, I was not a supporter of that, wasn't a support, and I did not know about it. So I want to clear that up. And then so now, this whole time, the the rate does not go, the rate was not adjusted or talked about going in effect being increased until now. So therefore, it went into place, we voted on a contract, but as far as the money goes, that was not presented to us to to implement the increase to the people until now. So that's that's the story.
Well, that was with the old, with the old, it was called Waste Management.
AM Waste, AM Waste, yeah.
AM Waste, Waste Management. That was the old contract and the mayor went on and just canceled that and renewed a new one with Waste Pro. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, I mean, the the termination was by the mayor's office on the current, on the on the calculation that you have right now. Your bill right now is calculated off of the previous contract and and so, yeah.
Well, what I would like to consider with the council to think about your people, that's not a, you know, not as wealthy as a lot of other people. And, you know, working in in the city of Hammond, we just need a little bit more lenient from the council to represent the people. And six to seven dollars is a lot of money for some people. So I'm here asking that y'all consider that. I'm against it and I've had twenty calls and I'm just expressing what they're telling me. So if anybody in the audience says a thing to say, y'all welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Council President, Council Administration, and everyone. Tracy Washington Wells, six ten Mooney Avenue. And while I appreciate the garbage comparisons that the administration has presented to you all, you represent your districts here. You voted for this contract to go into place in September of last year, minus one vote by my councilman, who was against it. I can only speak on behalf of what I know occurs in the district I live, which is District Three. And according to a grant that was funded to the city of Hammond, we are ninety-six point four, three percent low to moderate income. Seven dollars may not seem, and I'm saying seven because it was six dollars and ninety-eight cents, may not seem like a lot to you, but for someone, that may be their medicine, there may be bread, and with the day's prices, it may not even cover the eggs. So I ask you to consider your representatives that elected you. I was at the budget work session and I don't recall hearing, and if it was said and I did hear it, excuse me, but I don't recall hearing that this was part of the budget already. You guys are getting ready to approve a two-point-three million dollar project. I'll buy the airport and there are other issues and concerns. But I don't think that seven dollars passed on to us, the citizens, should be voted for because although you voted for a contract, the way that it was done, it was not kosher. You all didn't have an opportunity to decide whether or not you wanted a new contract. That contract was canceled without your approval. So you really was put behind already. So I'm asking you to consider your constituents. Some of you, as I've heard, live in affluent areas, but what about the ones who don't? And you may not have representation here tonight, but I guarantee when they get that new bill and there's a twenty-dollar charge, you're gonna be getting phone calls. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right. Hammond City Council Regular Agenda Session, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, five fifty-three P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
Here. Our prayer, please.
Most gracious love eternal Father, we thank you on today. Father God, we give you the glory and honor that is due your name. Father, come right now thanking you for your darling son who died in our place just to cover our sins and for that we are eternally grateful. Father God, we come asking right now that everything that's seen to be done decent, order pleasing and in your sight, therefore you would get all glory, all honor and all praise. Father God, I actually continue to cover us and keep us and protect us from all hurt, harm and danger. Continue to bless this council, continue to bless their families, continue to bless the districts in which they serve and represent right now. We actually continue to bless our city administration, continue to bless our fire department, our police department, continue to cover all of our city employees. Father, as every time we need you, we need you right now. So we actually continue to look down upon, to continue to guide us and keep us, continue to govern us through this meeting, therefore you would get all glory, all honor and all praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, by our pledge of allegiance, I ask that all veterans and active military please proper to render, render the proper salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get approval of our minutes from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Of staying.
All right, final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to increase the monthly garbage fee from fourteen oh eight to twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents, Lacy Landrell.
This is the same that we just discussed, so if there's any additional questions or comments?
I have a question about the recycling, the document attached. If we did not do the recycling, then that would be six dollars and forty-eight cents, is that right?
And forty cents.
And forty cents. And I I have quite a few people in my district who reach out. They use the 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 city recycling. I'm sensitive to the rate increase issue, obviously. That recyclops that was going around a while, I'd love to see, I'll reach out to them and see if they are still waiting to get a hundred people signed up because people who want recycling, they may pay the hundred dollars a year to get recycling there. So to me, that makes sense to at least take that off because we don't know for sure where that recycling is going, if it's cost-effective and and actually environmentally effective. That's just, we had a little discussion about recycling and that's how I I feel if anybody else has an issue with recycling.
I brought it up, I think, a while back. I I think you were gonna check into the the comments that were made about, probably about ninety percent of the the recycling is going to the dump, you know, and and so that was that was said in one of the other, when we voted on the previous contract approval. And that was kind of why my position was the way it was about not supporting that if we were double paying for that and just doing the rollaway at a better cost at that time, whenever we voted on the the previous contract. So if that's the case, you know, we kind of really need to know that. And I think the people who are rethinking their recycling, you know, know know what's going on and and if and if that isn't approved or chosen, that that the reason being is that it's it's not a, it's not as good as it sounds. And so it's not that it's an anti or against recycling. It's more so of a of a cost matter and pretty much not being taken advantage of, pretty much, so, so, yeah.
I think it's a compounding effect. I think you're right. I, as we've had lots of discussions over the past years, the entire recycling market, the the bottom has fallen out of. It is no longer marketable for a lot of companies to recycle because the goods and services, I don't think a lot of people knew that your goods and services that were recycled here in the United States, you think that they go to find a home as a new plastic bottle or as a new glass, something or whatever. That's actually not what was happening at all. They were getting shipped over to China and India and who knows what was happening at that point. that point. Um, our other challenge is that our, we've had several conversations with different providers about a percentage. Can we get a percentage, or can we get a tonnage, or can we get some kind of verification? And what we keep getting are a lot of different answers. Um, we get that, oh, yeah, well, this week was really good for cardboard, and this week they didn't accept the plastics, or this week they had to throw away this part, but they recycled this part. And so we're not getting straight answers, and I don't feel like it's a good value to the taxpayers until you can get that kind of purity for all the work.
Maybe we need to go more toward just, you know, looking at a third-party option and, and a, and, and promoting it to the people, um, so they know that we are pushing recycling, but, um, through a different company that they have an option to go with and, and, and organize their, their recycling through them. And I'm sure there's a lot of companies out there, I'm sure, um, that, that do that. Like Carly said, I had one that came, I think, a while back over here, and, uh, you know, not pushing him, but I'm sure there's a lot of options out there that we may need to research to, to, um, send notice out to, to people in the community for the recycling.
The only other thing I want to add is, um, if we, if the, if the increase doesn't pass, then we're looking to add, uh, the city taxpayers to pay four to five-hundred-thousand dollars a year to subsidize garbage. From about October first to the end of this month, the city will have paid around three-hundred to three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer money subsidizing the cost of the garbage. Uh, it's a yearly, it's a yearly cost, and every, you know, we, we spend our budget work session trying to improve parks, and, um, we have so many infrastructure needs. I think that on our budget, we have a backlog of, you know, millions of dollars of things that we need to get done. Um, so I, I just don't, I don't know how we don't pass this on to the customers, because we're looking at half a million dollars every year in our budget to pay for just a portion of garbage. It's not even all of garbage. It's not like we're offering free garbage to everyone. We're just offering a part of your garbage. Um, that doesn't seem like a good deal to anybody, quite, quite honestly, in my opinion. And it's not going to go back down. It's not going to go back down. It's not like we're going to be able to handle this for a couple of years, and then, and then it'll go back down to fourteen. Um, I mean, I don't, obviously don't have a, a looking glass where I can tell where that, what that's true or not, but none of us can imagine that prices are going to go back down. So, um, I just, we're going to consistently add money, taxpayer money, to subsidizing garbage every single year when we already have a tight budget. It doesn't seem like good use of tax dollars to me.
One minute, please. Uh, I'm trying my best not to say nothing about this, because what going to take place, we already see what district going to be affected by it, because of the conversation that started off, that the districts going to end up being affected by the Capitol late projects. And we wasn't concerned about this budget when we gave that raise out. And in that, in the budget right now, we still looking at a two-percent raise when we just gave our, a humongous raise, and what, nothing said. And everything we do, it affects the taxpayer. So we just can't be concerned about one thing. Let's look at everything. The railroad spur, it affects the taxpayer. So everything we do, paying, uh, help me out. When we was paying the bill, well, you can go get your driving license. You been paying that bill for twenty years. The taxpayers, that's coming out of the taxpayers' money. And what, nothing said about that. And look, we eliminate that, the railroad spur, it's paying for itself now. When it was the taxpayer, so when we talk, let's talk about the whole, the taxpayers are not able, yes, some of us up here are able, and I'm not going, you know, I can't lie, yeah, I'm able to pay it, but what about my neighbor? What about my aunt? What about my brother? What about my grandmother? What about my sister? Hammond, the people don't make no money. No, they not able to pay it. They'll go to the store and buy some tennis shoes now, but they bought what they want, but they still not able to pay these fees just because we throw it up on them. No, we have to be considered every time we vote on everything, because it do have an impact on the taxpayer. So let's be considered. We, we pretty much know how a person going to do already, because they district is covered. The infrastructure is short in my district. The sidewalks is short in my district. I'll tell you what's short, the damn park, what I want the kids to play in, it's short in my district. Yeah, I can't bite my tongue. District Three is coming up short. Every time you spend one dollar, you done spent a hundred thousand dollars in another district. That ain't nobody talking about. During the budget, nobody have nothing to say, because they district are already getting everything. I have a lot to say, because my district study coming up short. During this here, when the night over with, y'all don't see it, yeah, it going to affect District Three. It going to affect District Three, because you know why? District Three got a representative that going to talk for the people, not for me, for the people. District Three have a lot of poor people in the area. So the garbage, it going to hurt us, it going to hurt us. And you going to see when the next item come up, item two, now we finna give garbage away, and who paying for that? The taxpayers.
And, and I want to say, you know, and why we here today is, you know, you know, there's no way to say, but just some, some, some poor decisions, and then now, now here we are faced with discussing this increase on thirty percent. So this should have been taking place when the decision was made to terminate the current, the previous contract at that price and negotiate a plan that would not hit the, the residence by thirty percent increase. They were, they, we still had an eighteen months left on that contract. They could have negotiated an additional extension for a two-dollar, give them their two dollars and get another four years or whatever, and, and things could have been handled a little differently at that point in time, and, and I wasn't a part of that decision. And so therefore, here we are now facing this issue right here. And so it's tax dollars, it's tax dollars, the tax dollars, taxpayers been paying it from when the decision was made, and, um, you know, and if, and if the people pay it, it's, it's still tax dollars, so it's increase on taxes, so.
My name is Maria Huck, um, one-four-oh-three-two Country Manor Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven-oh-four-oh-three. That's my old address, my new address, I wouldn't, I wish not to say what it is, is that okay?
That's okay.
Thank you. Um, you know, y'all talking about the, the garbage fee going up, but I never heard the causes and conditions. Why? What is the basic, you know, why? You know, is the landfill demanding money, or the employees demanding money? Why is it going up? What is the cause and conditions? You know, getting down to the root of the problem? You know, um, I, I didn't hear that. If y'all said it and I missed it, I'm sorry, you know? Also, I was looking at the resolutions, I don't know if y'all go over them, you know, but serving alcohol from seven-thirty till eleven A. M., I think that's why the police department need bulletproof vests, because everybody's loaded and rocking in the street. I mean, with, with the alcohol and the open containers and all this stuff, you know, that, that's like, you know, the drug and alcohol world is being praised. You know, e, at a walk and run, they going to serve alcohol in the morning from seven-thirty till eleven A. M. And like I said, you know, I hope the, uh, police department get their bulletproof vests. So, um, thank you and for letting me be here and share, and I hope everything works out.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is one.
Good evening.
Dangerfield, three-one-four, River Dangerfield Drive. I understand what this lady is talking about, the Chinese thing. I've been hearing on the news about the robot thing for the, for the recycling and all that. But, yeah, we coming up short. We always come up short in our district. But I told the councilman, I was going to work with him to get some of the things that I think the community need. Now, you people in a hard spot. It ain't going to be just going to get some telephone calls. When the people look down at their bill and see this increase, they already know they can't afford, and they going to say, why me? Now, y'all going to have to come up with the answers, because they going to come up with the votes. And believe me, don't, nothing bring a person out than affecting his pocketbook. So, should have been handled different. I don't know why they changed from the old, uh, the old, the old garbage, uh, collection service. Man, I actually see the guys coming along, get the garbage, just fine. Maybe somebody didn't like what the people were doing. You know why, councilman? You know why, councilman?
Y'all just know why. But the problem is, right now, it's just like a church mouse. If you talk, you going to get punished. So nobody going to say nothing right now. You ain't going to get nobody to talk.
Well, I'm going to tell you like this here. I can pay it, but I don't want to pay it. And a whole lot of people that can't pay it, you going to hurt them people. Like you said, ain't nothing going down no more. All, everything's going up. What y'all going to do about it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to say this here, about the garbage. What the administration don't realize, the councilman controlled the budget. The councilmen forgot what they supposed to do. They going to control the budget. So if something they don't like, they can always say, we don't want that. That's what the councilmen don't realize. The administration don't run the budget. The administration set the budget out, and it's up to the councilman to approve the budget. So it ain't like your hands tied, so you don't have to sit on your hands up here acting like they tied. We control the budget, and that's what the city don't realize. And if you look around you, from New Orleans to Buggalooza, the councilman controlled the budget, not the mayor, not the administration. The councilman controlled the budget. The councilman's the one made sure the police got a raise. The councilman made sure that the city workers got a raise. The councilmen did it. So the councilman, we control the budget. So don't sit up here and not be afraid. You know what's right, you know what's wrong. So don't sit here and sugarcoat nothing and act like six dollars and eighty cent is no money. So let's do our job and what the people picked us to do. That's why all of us was able to come back up here, because of the people. Let's do our job.
Afternoon.
Council, Director of Administration, you know, I really said I was not going to say anything, but when I first came in and I sat down, after a few minutes, I wanted to walk back out the door. My grandmother used to tell me, time brings on a change, and nothing is going to stay the same. I remember when I could take a quarter and buy a bag of potato chips, a candy bar, some moon cookies, some two-for-a-penny candy, and a cold drink. But I can't do that now, because everything has gone up. It's not my fault it's gone up, it's not the council fault it's gone up, it's not the mayor fault, it's nobody fault. It is just government, it's just inflation, period. There's nothing we could do about it. But the one thing that we keep on doing, I'm talking about this city council, is the bickering and malice and, and back and forth, and she got this, and they got that, and we ain't got this. If, if we work together, if we would just work together and come together, instead of always pointing the finger, blame, blame, we could get somewhere. As far as the garbage is, man, if people, if people don't want their garbage piled up outside, they will pay it. If they, if, if, and, and, and the one thing that this council should be doing, instead of bickering against each other, figuring out how to tell your constituents, look, this is what the deal is. Now, we either got to do this thing, or we going to have pile up of garbage all over our city. I mean, I, I, it's, it's just, it is just, it just hurts my heart that I was born in this city, and I lived in this city, it's doing be sixty-five years, and we are at the point now where we have, we, we, we can't, we can't get anything done. If we do get something done, it's always a scream and a curse match about it. It is totally, it is totally ridiculous that grown people sit behind these areas and curse and scream and bicker and argue about everything that go on. Come, I mean, get together. We are never going to get anything done if we keep on bickering and arguing about it. And I promise you, Lord, forgive me, I represent God. That's who I try to represent. I don't always do it right, but that's why Jesus died on the cross, because he knew I wasn't going to always do it right. Everybody do some stuff they have nobody's doing, but the thing is, until this council figure out how to put their heads together, work out something that every, that, 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 that they're satisfied about, try your best, you, you going to have to get, it's a give and take. It ain't going to always be your way. It ain't going to always be the other person's way. But I promise you, with, with that seven dollars, I mean, hey, yes, the why? I, for one, can't afford it, but if it has, when it comes to garbage, we don't want garbage all over the place, and we, and, and if, and if we have to figure out a way, I mean, if y'all could get together and figure out a way to make this thing work, you could put your heads together and say, look, man, can, can you not do with this, for, for, for this to happen? What, what can you do without for this to happen? Instead of blaming each other.
I might have to stop you right there real quick, because I don't think, you may have been a different council meeting than I have been here for the last hour or so, but I don't, I didn't, I didn't hear any bickering between any of us here. It's a serious issue. I don't know where you're at, but, hold up, say, let me finish. It, this is a serious issue that people in this community have been least calling me about, in my, in my district that I represent, and it's a thirty percent increase on the garbage, and we're all up here to make a, a, a decision for people, so it, it's something that is a serious decision to be made, and everybody up here has the right to speak and say what they want to say and everything else. And there was no bickering, no cursing, so I don't know where you were at, but there was no cursing, no bickering, nothing up here. There was some thoughts, some, some points being made by people in the audience and up, up here as well, making some points. So I don't know, maybe, maybe I missed, maybe I missed something, but I, I didn't hear any bickering.
You did, you did. But anyway, as I was saying, uh, I understand your constituents are calling you. So that's where you go to your other members, and you say, look, everybody get together and say, look, man, our constituents are having a fit. That's where you come together, and you try, and you try your best to either make them understand, or you try your best to figure out another way. That's all I'm saying.
My name is Pete Greco, live at twenty-one-hundred West Dale Court in Hammond. I just want to ask one question. The garbage runs twice a week. Why? I don't have enough garbage to put in the garbage can twice a week. Why can't they cut it down to once a week, and you won't have to raise it? That's all I got to say.
I'll respond, I, I think that's a, a valid point. We have had that discussion previously. There are a lot of other people in the city of Hammond who would scream if it was once a week. So it's kind of a balancing act of people who have large families, they definitely need it twice a week. People who are retirees, maybe don't have children at home, they only want it once a week. So we had to make a decision of once a week. So, we had to make a decision of once a week or twice a week.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I tell you what, I guarantee you, if you go around and check it, there's more people don't need it by once a week than, than twice a week.
I only need it once a week.
A bunch of two runs once a week, probably ain't meet the rest of them once a week. Why Hammond's gotta run? If you wanna save money for the people, cut it down to once a week, 'cause you won't have to raise the budget.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lacey, our contract is twice a week. We can't change to once a week for a different price, correct?
You can always ask.
You can amend contracts as long as they, as long as they, you know, would approve that. But, uh, I, I think there's several ways. I think the concerns of my district, anyway, is, is, is the increase of, of, um, so much at one time, being, being a large thirty percent, um, increase. So, I mean, I, I think maybe we need to go back to the drawing board and, uh, and, and then figure something out on, on this. Either, either a, a tier, um, transition, um, you know, uh, over, over a period of time, increase, or, uh, or, or just, uh, you know, looking at options of the, of the one time a, a week compared to twice a week, how much savings. You know, that, there's some options, I think, instead of just sticking the thirty percent increase on the, you know, on everybody at one time. So, that, that's just something I'm thinking about, so.
Quick question for you, Lacey. Is there a way to actually get some answers to these questions? Like the once a week breakdown? I know if we remove the recycling, we already see what that little bit would be, but is there a way to go back to them to actually get a number on it to see what the difference would be?
I'm sure we could ask. Um, Andre Cudry and our city attorney is out of town for the rest of this week, but we can always go back to the provider. We can ask Andre what's within our bounds as accepting bids and working with contracts and all that. I'm, I'm sure we can always ask. There's never a problem with asking.
Okay. Then my next question would be, um, tabling this until we can get an answer. To see if there, it can be some kind of breakdown or something to, where we can move through this here, navigate through the waters a little bit better.
Ms. Lacey, I have a question also, for the senior citizen. I know we had talked about the senior citizen rate, about they can, they'll come get the garbage can from side of their house or whatever. But now that we talking, is it any way that we can see, what, fifty-five on up? See if we can give a senior citizen discount, because like the gentleman said, you know, he just have enough garbage for once a week. And Mr. Sayow, he have enough garbage for once a week. And I only have enough garbage for once a week, so I don't have to put my can out there twice. So, is there any way that we can really look into, not to help me, but help the senior citizen? Because if you look in the room, you see who in here talking about the rates. It's the senior citizen. And in my community, a lot of people don't show up, because once you talk, somebody gonna go back and say, they said this and they said that. So, that's what we deal with a lot in our community. That's why they don't come to the council meeting, because fingers be pointing at them.
Well, then you made a good point too. A lot of the seniors are affected, and a lot of seniors may not be able to come to the meetings because of whatever health reasons or whatnot, but, but they're affected by the, by the garbage probably mostly. So, um, that, that's another, another issue as well, too, so.
Well, for this particular item, at this point, I would actually make a motion to table this item until we can get a breakdown on the once a week pickup.
And some options, maybe. Just do that, and also do seniors, and, I mean, I don't know, maybe get creative with, you know, with, with, um, you know, uh, someone with large families gonna need it twice. I don't know how creative they can get with that, but if some of them, they may not, some of my district, I get calls from some people, and they put it out once, probably every two weeks. Like, there's just not much, but that's not everybody. So, so, that, that's something there that maybe we need to look at with, with seniors or, um, pricing, maybe, or, or something. So, I, I, look at a few options. I, I would say, um, go back to the drawing board and, and, and maybe, you know, even, even if it's a tier where it's, where it's over a period of time, a year, you know, increase here, there, or whatnot, as opposed to all at one time. I mean, just several different options that we can look at to kinda, uh, help this situation out.
One option, maybe, um, if the company is willing to go to once a week, and if we don't have to rebid that, you know, there's lots of questions that we'll make sure and work through. But one option, maybe, because I know we have customers right now who have requested and pay for a second can. That may be, if you had a larger family, to, a way that you could do once a week service, but you had, you pay for that second can. So, like you're suggesting, is maybe that's a way to give, give a fair rate to a lot of people, but then those who maybe have, uh, additional needs, they, they supplement those and, and they afford that way. So, the, we, we will try to look as many options as we can.
Yeah. That, that, that's a good one right there. You said with the two cans possibly could be a good for those households, and then they wouldn't have to pass once a week, so. But anyway, yeah, I, I think there definitely more time needed to look at this, so.
It's just a short, short question. Isn't the, um, garbage tidying with the water, the sewage, and, and the bill?
Yes.
Yes.
People, you know, in my, in my world, um, I might notice a little hike, but I probably wouldn't notice it, because everything's breaking down, and then the water's always going up. You know, sometimes I feel like, why isn't that separate? I've been thinking this for years. Why isn't the garbage separate from the water and the, and the sewage, you know? Why do they make it one bill? 'Cause who's getting all the money? The water company? You know, is it really being split equally, you know? I've always had that question on mine. I don't, I don't know what the solution is.
It should show on that bill. It should show like the sewer.
I don't think a lot of people notice it.
The water.
I, I never did notice it. I always noticed the height, you know? But I always wondered why they didn't keep the garbage separate from the water, you know?
Yeah, they're separate on the bill, but both of those services are provided by the city.
Right.
So, all the money comes to the city.
Right. Oh, okay.
So, it's not like your money, we take and give to Amwaste. We pay Amwaste, and then we take your money and reimburse ours.
And I think it's an efficiency thing, too. Instead of somebody sending out two bill, it saves time, paper, eh, eh, more efficient putting it all on one bill. But yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is a peaceful meeting.
By usage.
And all of those things do go in, like, your revenue line items, you'll see those separated. So, the same way that they're separating in your bill, they don't just come to the city and all go in one big pot. They stay in the water pot, they stay in the sewer pot, they stay in the garbage pot, they stay in the clean water fee that goes to the state. So, each of those things that you see on your bill kinda stays in its own pot, and then is combined in different ways, either to pay the contractors, or to pay the state, or to pay for the services.
But the parish do have it separate, though. Uh, the parish have it where you can pay your garbage bill yourself or household. They do have it like that. So, what President Andrews said, yes, I would like for us to, uh, put it on hold, and let's go over some things.
Yes. So, you second that?
Yes, I second.
There was another hand in the audience, so.
Somebody else had something to say?
Sam.
So.
Yes, I just wanna thank the council for listening to the public. And, uh, you know, it's always good to bring people in here and to try to, you know, get an understanding. And the lady and Pete and a few people came in by, because, you know, they were asked to come out. But I asked twenty of them that called me, and I said, well, okay, I'm going up there. If y'all wanna come, come on. But you know, it's like, when you're a certain age now, you don't wanna get out as much. And I think that once a week is a great program, because, uh, the garbage cans are really big, number one. And, uh, maybe, you know, the city could re, rework that contract if the, uh, you know, a lot of the councils willing to work with, they're thinking about the, the people in, you know, that's, that we representing, okay? I say we, I'm talking about the council representing. And thank y'all for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance nine, resolutions. Resolution number one.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's Open Container Law to North Shore Families Helping Families for the third annual NFHF Walk, Run, and Roll five K and ten K event, being held on Saturday, September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from six AM to eleven AM at Kate Square Park. Actual service of alcohol will be from seven-thirty to eleven AM. The event boundaries are West Charles Street, North Magnolia Street, West Robert Street, and North Oak Street. Heather Saint Amet.
Hi, I'm Heather Sanamont. I am Board Chair of North Shore Families Helping Families and their Race Director. I'm here to ask for an ordinance variation, uh, for that short period of time, uh, to clarify, uh, open container alcohol. It's just be, um, I've spoken to, we have a soft commitment from Low Road Brewing, which is a local brewery. I wanted to kinda keep it local in the neighborhood. Uh, it's mainly, to be honest, it's a marketing ploy. It's to runners like beer. They like to have a, an eight-ounce glass of beer after a run, and to attract more runners to pay a registration fee, which makes money for our organization, which Tangahbo Parish is a big part of our community that we help. So, it's basically what it is. And it's a very short period of time. I can tell you, I have never been to a race, and I've been running for years. Uh, I've been coaching for years, and I've never seen drunks after, at an after-party. But it's very simple. It's, um, it's an event, uh, basically, our organization, we provide resources and services, along with educational services, for, uh, children and adults with, um, developmental disabilities and special needs. And we cover St. Tammany, Tangahbo, Washington, St. Helena, and Livingston Parish. We are Region Nine, and this is our biggest fundraiser of the year. And we're hoping that it goes very well, considering that some of our funding from the state is on the chopping block, which I'm sure a lot of other funds are on the chopping block as well. So, I ask for your consideration in granting this, uh, ordinance variation, and hopefully y'all can come out and have fun with us.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone from the council?
See, I can walk, I can't run, but can I walk fast?
You can, you can walk. You can walk fast. You can roll. It's a run, walk, and roll. We actually have the Ainsley's Angels of Louisiana that's going to be there. Uh, so, we'll have running chariots. It's, everyone is welcome. We are an inclusive organization, and that's the reason why we put it on. So, if y'all come out and see what we're about, you know, put, put it this way. The people that we help, they're gonna put a smile on your face, and you're gonna walk away crying because they put that smile on your face.
How much is the alcohol, ma'am?
We're not selling.
Okay.
We are not selling.
So, so, so they just giving alcohol away for the runner?
Yeah, our, our, for the runners. Yeah, for, um, our participants. It's just that, like, kinda, it's a marketing tactic to attract more runners to the event, uh, 'cause those are the people that are gonna pay the registration fee to run. And it's also a way for one of our local breweries in the area to get a little bit more exposure to people. 'Cause I actually have runners that come in all the way from Shreveport, Lafayette, Monroe, Mississippi. Uh, I've had some families come in from Alabama, Texas, um, northern Mississippi, up above Jackson. So, it, it kinda brings people in and showcase part of what Hammond's about, and a lot of the businesses in Hammond. So, but we are not selling.
I'm gonna say this.
They usually give out, like, eight-ounce, six, eight-ounce cup.
Okay. I'm gonna say this here, congratulations, and keep being a giver. Keep being a giver. And thank you so much for what you trying to do for the city of Hammond and the surrounding areas.
So, Devine, if you, if you go out and walk, you'll be able to get the little eight, eight-ounce to.
We're gonna have food, too.
Help try to cool you off after that, that, that walk. I understand what you're talking about, brother.
Yeah, eight ounces ain't gonna be enough for me.
Well, you know.
I got to feel a bit.
We'll have water, and, um, I, I'm hoping to hear from the Lieutenant Governor's office, too. He might make an appearance, we're hoping. So, um, yeah, might have some surprises. Who knows?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number two?
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the City of Hammond with BFI Waste Services LLC, DBA Republic Services of Baton Rouge, in the estimated amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Janice Swallow?
Good evening.
Good evening, Jan.
This is our annual, uh, front-end load dumpster services. That is for our buildings. The current contractor, BFI, declined to renew at their current rate that they had bided on last year, so we opted to put a new RFP out. We have four proposals. They came in again as the lowest proposal. As you see, I put estimated cost of sixty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents, because the actual rentals for all dumpsters will be fifty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. We had to estimate the tonnage for our one-ninety roll-offs, which we have two of. I did it on the high end, and that's where I came up with a figure of sixty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Asking for council's approval to move forward.
Janice, I have a few questions. Uh, the city hall, we'll, we'll go, we'll let you go down the list. Okay, the city hall, the first one. Okay, I understand that. The five central, the second one. I understand that. The food pantry, e- explain that to me.
Um, I really, Lacey, can you explain?
That's a partnership that we have had for many, many years. I don't, I don't know how far back that goes in terms of bidding out the dumpsters since you've been here.
Okay, because, and I'm glad you said that, Ms. Lacey, the partnership, uh, with the nonprofit, and I'm one of the ones voted, uh, gonna vote against it, giving out money. And, and this is why I'm bringing this up. We talking about the garbage rates. But I hope I'm not the one having noticed this. We talking about the garbage rates for the resident, but yet we turning around about to give money away on something else. So, since I got you, Ms. Lacey, on Pecan Street, what's, what's going on there?
That's our building maintenance facility.
Okay. Uh, one-ninety, two times per month. Is it any way that we can cut back on it, or what?
We actually did change that up. We had a roll-off with three dumpsters.
Uh-huh.
And we took the three dumpsters off and increased the roll-off to cut the cost of that actual facility's pricing.
The senior citizen.
Where's that at? What is, what is that?
The council on aging.
Page six.
Yeah, no, no, I see, but I'm, I'm trying to, um, location-wise, this. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Okay. Now, the council and agent, agency, now, we giving them money already. So, and we gotta pay their garbage bill? We giving them money already. 'Cause see, what I'm trying not to do is, and I got to say, uh, I'm trying not to get nothing cut in District Three. That's what I'm working on. So, do we have to get their money and pay their garbage bill? I mean, that's a question. I mean, they know.
You're not legally obligated to, if that's the answer that you're looking for. It, it would be a council decision.
Okay. Sewer plant, Fagan Drive, uh, is it any way we can cut that back, Mondays and Thursdays?
I would have to ask, uh, the Water Superintendent, um, Guy Palermo. Um, I know they out there majority seven days a week. I really don't know what actual garbage that they bring in, tonnage-wise, I really don't know what actual garbage that they bring in tonnage wise, but that is something we can ask about.
Zemeryr Park?
I think that is a dumpster that's out there by the swimming pool and the skate park. And I know that.
The rec center.
Yes, they, recreation, all them, bring fire department on the other side, bring their trash and dump it in that is used.
Now, watching now, cause we got the fire department on here too.
We have multiple fire departments, the department right across the street.
Yeah, okay. The police training, that's once a week.
And it's a small dumpster.
Alleyway?
That one we're reimbursed for by the people, by the business owners there. So the business owners throughout Morrison Alley all pay for that dumpster through their water bills. Instead of carrying separate trash, they pay for the dumpster.
So if they paying for the dumpsters?
That one, that one is a, is a budget wash, I would say, because we get the money. They get charged the money for that to pay for that dumpster. We just decided to put a dumpster there because we had so many issues with trash being back there and not being collected properly because there's three restaurants on that same block right there.
Okay, cause this is what I'm looking at, Ms. Lacey, and you help me out. When I'm riding downtown, I see any garbage trucks downtown picking up garbage. So should nobody have to put garbage out in the front if we're gonna do this here right? I'm asking.
You mean if we, if we didn't have the dumpster?
Yeah.
If we didn't have the dumpster, there would be massive amounts of trash in Morrison Alley because there's three restaurants on that block alone.
Yeah, okay, well, what I'm saying?
They can't, they have more trash than could fit in, in like the, the carts, the hand carts.
Okay, so can I see, uh, maybe this week where we making sure that the city, that they actually paying for their garbage fees? Okay, so, let's see what else I have on here, the fire department, they good. Cause what I'm saying, I'm looking at how much money we spending on the alleys and the garbage fees. And so what we look like we're gonna take off? Uh, is this something that we need to talk about now or, or, or take it off? Cause the senior citizen, we're giving them money already. How much money we get them every year?
I believe it's 60,000.
60,000. So.
Yeah, it's for the bus service.
60,000 just for them to, you know, do what they want. It's 60,000 to operate the city bus.
So the, the alleyway, uh, alleyway Kate Street, uh, that one right there is, that one is, where is that? Which one is that behind?
That's the same way. So the alleyway is behind, um.
But they got the one behind tacos and beer and all that, that is?
That's one of them.
Is that, um, alleyway Kate or alleyway Thomas? Cause that'd be Thomas, should be, right?
Morrison Alley is the one behind, uh, tacos and beer and our moms. The other one is across the street from, uh, across Cypress is the entrance to that back alley.
Yeah.
So it services, um, the Luna Coffee Place, the.
Oh, the other side, I got you.
In fact, I don't think it's Luna. I think it's, um, Topolaw participates in that one, uh, this, the cafe, the coffee shop. Um, the two bars, I think both participate. I know for sure one of them does.
Mm-hmm.
That again is a, is a budget wash because it's charged to the customers for that dumpster.
That was my only concern.
Have we ever, uh, why didn't we try to, um, bid the, the garbage, those dumpsters that we have like with the regular contract? Like put them all to where like, you know, Wasteman, Waste Pro, when we went, Waste Pro, like why wouldn't we have at some point in time bidded them all out with, you know, the same company to see if it would have been a better rate? Like what, um, why, why is it separate instead of letting them bid out?
Services that we request, and this is a front end loader, um.
Well, I'm just saying that some of these companies offer both.
Doesn't offer.
I was about to say.
Yeah, but I mean, some of them do, like Waste Pro's on here, so that's what I was saying. But they're bidding out separately. Like what I'm saying is the contract for the regular garbage pickup is usually comes before the dumpsters round. Like I just would, I would have thought that it'd probably be better to probably bid them out together. And then the ones who only do those, just put them in the mix of bidding it out. And then the ones that do both, let them do both. So that, that's what I'm getting at, cause some of these companies that do both, they may have been able to give a, a better rate if they offer both at, at the time of negotiating.
Uh, that's a question I could just ask in consideration to see if it affected the price.
Yeah, I was just curious on that, cause I'd imagine this, it would have been nice to just bid them all out at the same, same time when we do garbage and, and rollaways.
Anyone else have any questions?
Just a lot of discussion about nonprofits and things. The food pantry, that's $3,200 a year for their garbage. And the council on aging, $3,200 a year for their garbage. Those were the two quote unquote nonprofits, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Tracy Washington Wells, 16 Mon Avenue. By Councilwoman Gonzalez asking that question about, uh, Tangi Food Pantry and Council on Aging that would actually cover, and I'm thinking about the $7, so excuse me, 914 residents. So if we are gonna pay for Tangi Food Pantry and Council on Aging garbage, take into consideration that would cover 914 residents. Okay, so just weigh that out because 914 residents in my district would love for you to pay their garbage.
Jan, I guess what I was getting at, I was just trying to figure out if there was a reason why, like that I don't know about. That was it. So it may be a reason why they did it separately like that or at timing or whatever. So that's kind of what, you know, if you get a chance, just see what, I was curious.
It's just probably how the contracts previously fell out. Because the trash for this isn't usually a five-year contract. Ours is usually up to three years. Um, I know y'all have some guy where they can increase those. These is either renew every year or decline. And I'm not saying that's the reason that it's been like this in the past, but it's definitely something we can ask about. I would definitely ask Waste Pro and, uh, and Waste which bid it on us, if it would affect their pricing.
And do they do long, do they do longer contracts in a year?
Yeah, it, they have often up to three years.
Up to three years, okay.
So, anyone else? Pleasure to the council?
Yeah, how we gonna do about those nonprofits in there? So will we take that out or what? How we gonna do this?
Could the administration ask them to pay their bill? Pay a bill? If that's, if the, if the council doesn't want to pay for garbage for these two nonprofits, it could be like these residents and restaurants who reimburse the city since we're obviously gonna have a better rate that would help out these nonprofits so that, um, you know, they're getting the benefit of the city's bargaining power.
You want to maybe just table this and then, and then kind of come up with reaching out to them or, or something with that? And since we're table another?
We'll approve it and just send them a bill.
Yeah, we could just, I mean, we can just send them, if, if that's the council's decision, we can just send them the invoice for that amount on their water and sewer bill. And with a notification of.
Do they pay water and sewer?
Here's the new.
So we gonna amend?
I don't think we have to amend it.
We don't have to, okay.
So how we gonna make sure this thing?
Well, there's nothing in this that says that those other ones are paying it and so now they have to send a bill. I would think that's an administrative issue. The administration needs to send a bill. I mean, if you want to do a second resolution saying the council wishes you to.
Maybe with a comment on.
Wouldn't make a removal and I guess we'd make a motion to approve this with, um, I think we definitely need to say something about what we're gonna do, uh, with that. So I mean, maybe just vote, vote, uh, you know, to, to, to remove those two items and then make up another one and, and make another one after saying that, you know, to.
I think that the better way to do it would be to approve it, um, and with, make a motion to, I'm not making this motion because I don't agree with this, but I make a motion to approve these bids and direct the administration to include the cost for the food pantry and, um, council, council on aging in their water bill.
Well, I think if you could do that, you need to include all.
They're already done doing that.
They're already doing that, but we're not stating that. Is it stated anywhere? See what I'm saying? I mean, if we're gonna clean it up, clean it up.
Yeah, I think if there's some conditions or, you know, if you want to prove, prove it with a condition, with a condition of.
All non-city entities must be billed on their water bill.
So that's the motion?
So what was the motion?
I don't, somebody needs to make the motion. It's not my motion.
Okay. That all non-city entities receive a monthly bill for their trash, for dumpster on their water bill.
Second.
And, and we are entering into the contract, a motion to approve, maybe the language as stated on the agenda.
You want to add the "and"?
And we entering?
So how many votes do we have?
Well, so we don't even, we don't even have the, we don't even.
The way it's gonna be styled is a motion to approve the contracts and include that all non-city entities must pay their, their fee on their water bill. The first part is to approve the contract, which is what's in the agenda, right? Is that your motion, Gil?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Wells seconded it.
We know what to do when the lawyer not around, huh? I see it's getting, it's getting important now to have a assistant.
That's not true.
No, I ain't talking about you. I'm saying we don't quite know, we don't quite know what's right. Cause we don't have no, we don't have the opinion of a lawyer. So we don't know. And when certain lawyers talk, it scare me, cause I'm thinking, oh, Lord, it gonna be too good now.
So, so how did that resolution read? Did, did you get it written down?
No.
I didn't get it written down the way that you said all of the wording, but I'll go back and listen to it.
But basically you approved the, the, the resolution on the, on the agenda as it is, which with the, with changes to all nonprofit entities receiving a bill, something like that.
All non-city entities.
All non-city.
That's what I have, non-city entities receiving a bill. It'll be worded right.
No, it's only one vote. It's all one resolution.
Okay. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
I just wanted to make a little comment is that, you know, we got some of these big contracts like this come up. Be nice, you know, to just check to see if we have the attorney, you know, if he's gonna be able to make it or not just because some issues like this, it'd be, you know, good if we had, I mean, garbage is a big contract and some of these. So, um, I know everybody has their personal life and everything, but you know, it'd have been nice maybe just to put it on the agenda when, when, you know, he was gonna be here, um, the, the city attorney or some representative of, of his office. Uh, so if there was any questions on, on some of the contracts, we could, we could get that addressed. Uh, I think that would be a, a good idea in, in the future, just to kind of, if there's some, some big contract topic items to come up. I think it would help all of us out up here. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Resolution number three?
A resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract with the Daily Star as the official journal for the City of Hammond, Louisiana, from Fe, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. Janice Swallow?
This is the designation that we do every year that is required by the state. That is, uh, just basically stating that the official journal for the City of Hammond will be the Daily Star. The Daily Star is the only one that's applicable for this. Um, nothing has changed as in pricing or anything from the last several years. So we're just asking for council's approval to approve us into this contract.
Any questions or concerns from anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan.
Resolution number four?
A resolution, one, accepting a $25,000 grant from the AARP Community Challenge to transform Morrison Alley and its pocket park into a vibrant public space and two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign related documents. Charles Boucher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is actually one that we brought to the council at the end of February. And we were absolutely delighted a couple of weeks ago to receive word that we will be receiving our grant. Uh, we had originally applied for $50,000. Um, apparently this was the most competitive year they've ever had. There's over like 3,000 grants. Um, so we're delighted to get 25,000. We're gonna reduce the scope a bit. This will probably be more focused on the pocket park that's at the end of Morrison Alley off of Cypress than the whole alley. Um, and as we kind of come up with some ideas, we'll be presenting those to the council and to the community for, for input. There's no match requirement.
Anyone from the public? Any questions from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Resolution number five?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of 26 bulletproof vests for Hammond Police Officers from RSG Wholesale at a cost of $27,841. Under state contract 4400025826. The purchase will be made with $23,690.97 in bulletproof vest partnership grant funds and $4,150.03 in police department funds. Charles Boucher.
This one's fairly self-explanatory. Um, the 26 bulletproof vests that we'll be, will be ordering, uh, most of these, I think about almost 20 of them are to replace vests that we originally purchased in 2018 for officers. We're on a five-year replacement cycle, so those vests are up for replacement. We have about six or so new officers, at least I've never seen them listed in our records before. So I'm assuming they're new hires hired within the last several months. Um, we're gonna exhaust what bulletproof vest partnership grant money we have. That's that $23,690.97. And the police department has agreed to cover the remaining balance.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Counsel? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Council mean reports, mayor's office?
Very quickly, uh, the mayor regrets not being able to attend tonight, but his wife is recovering from surgery well. And is projected to be able to go home later this week. Um, on Friday, the city offices will be closed for Juneteenth. Um, day, that is in alignment with the state offices. I know it's a little confusing this year, the way the calendar fell. The federal holiday is on Monday. Um, so the city will be open on Monday, but closed this Friday. Um, June 27th, at our next council meeting, we will be taking up the budget, um, hopefully for some final votes. Our plan is to have the amendments that we went through at the budget work session to the council by the end of business tomorrow um, so that you can have that list. Again, if you have additional ideas or things that you want, you know, to try to consider, we'll be happy to run the math on those in advance. Um, and then, uh, just an early preview, we are having fireworks for July 4th. They are on July 4th. So the celebration is at Zemeryr Park. We usually start around 5 o'clock with different food vendors and a DJ and inflatables and a climbing wall for the kids and lots of fun, so.
Lacey, will we adjust the budget with an amendment showing the removal of the revenue so we can expect an amendment?
We will do all.
For the garbage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any council reports?
Yes. The kids. The kids or the young people are killing one another. We protecting everybody, but we're not protecting the kids. We need to sit down, come up with something with the police department, the city councilman, the city administration. Everybody that got killed, it affected my community and I know the people. Either they killed somebody or somebody that got killed. And what we don't realize is happening in my community today. But tomorrow can affect your community. So we see what's going on in New Orleans. We see what's going on in Baton Rouge. At one time, the city could say, we ain't never had nobody get killed in Hammond. We ain't never had nobody get killed in Hammond. The gun violence is out of control. The news station called me yesterday about the last person that got killed in Hammond, about the monitor that they had on their ankle. And I'm not gonna talk about nothing that I don't know nothing about. But we as the citizens, we as the people, we need to sit down and talk. If it's going on in my neighborhood, eventually it gonna come to your neighborhood. And just like we talk about the op yard, that didn't affect the blacks, but we talked about it. And we voted for stuff. We sued companies. Now it's in my community. I wanna hear these same conversations. I wanna hear these same laws. Let's talk about this. It hurts. That's what I come up here for. Because the kids are carrying guns that can kill all of us in here right now and don't think nothing about it. The community is hurting.
That's true.
And it's sad. A couple of months ago, it was in Martin Luther King Park. Now it's up there around the university. And it's so much taking place that we don't even hear about it, that it's going on. The four-wheelers, the dirt bikes, everything I talk about is taking place. When that four-wheeler kills somebody that look like you, when that dirt bike kills somebody that look like you, then we'll talk about it. But a lot of this stuff can be prevented if we just come up with the rules right now. So that's one thing I wanna push and I wanna be a part of. Keep community, in my community, we seeing it, we hearing it every day. By time the police come out, the gunshots over with. And the police know how long it take for somebody to fire a gun. But when these police come out, tell the police, don't call the police and don't tell them. Tell the police what's going on. It could be your people. It could be my people. We have to let them know it's not cool carrying these guns. We have to be responsible for the kids in our community. That's it. I can't tell you about the improvement because the gunshots is enough and the kids getting killed. Nobody can replace a life once you lose one. That's it. Sam?
Um, I just, can you check on, um, speed bump that I submitted in there on Barnes? A couple of, they were calling about a lot of, lot of flying down that road with a lot of kids walking and everything on Barnes Street. So I sent it in a couple of months back, I think, or so, and I just wanna get and make sure the ticket's in and it's in process. And I know it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but just so I can let them know over there that it's gonna be a month or whatever to let them know. Thank you.
Sam, I mean, Steve, call it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mean adjourn.